Good morning. This is the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting of November 25th, 2024. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on December 3rd, 2024 at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which were available in the commission chambers during the meeting and they're in the back of the room where the agendas are. And we'll start with roll call. We have all of the Planning Commissioners here except our Board of Commissioner representative is not going to be present today. Has everyone reviewed the November 12th, 2024 minutes?
Put a motion on the table to approve the minutes on November 12th, 2024 as published in the agenda.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the November 12th, 2024 minutes. Is there any discussion from the commission? From the audience? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. The Chair would address a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Target.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. Discussion from the audience? From the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item four is Conditional Use Permit Review, C O R 1612 for TC Enterprises, Inc., to review the use of bicycle rentals, ATV rentals, and a retail shop in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, C O R 1612 with conditions. Item number five is Conditional Use Permit Review, C O R 2009 for David and Janelle Gorgin, to review an existing single wide mobile home to be used as storage in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, C O R 20-09 with conditions. Item number six is Conditional Use Permit Review, C U 2173 for M&amp;M Medical Solutions, to review a marijuana cultivation facility in a heavy industrial district, and staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit Review, C O R 2173 as the applicant has not established the use. And finally, item seven is Conditional Use Permit Review, C U 2337 for Kevin and Renee Egbratton, to allow an accessory dwelling unit in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, C O R 2337 with conditions.
Would staff like any items removed from the consent agenda?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Would the Planning Commission like any items from the consent agenda removed? Would any audience members like any item from the consent agenda removed? The Chair would address a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make that a motion.
Target.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Discussion from the audience? From the commission? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, Cody.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item number eight is Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0027, is to allow animal sporting events on the subject property. The applicant landowner is David and Angela Dorn, and she is in the audience if there are any questions. Location of the property is 5100 143rd Avenue, involves 20 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off 143rd and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria the Planning Commission may consider in the review of a conditional use permit application. It does appear that the requested use does meet all of that criteria. 143rd Avenue is a 24-foot wide paved public right-of-way, and the applicants have plenty of designated off-street parking. The current zoning is agriculture district, which this use would be allowed with an approved conditional use permit. Currently on the property, there is a single-family residence, 26-by-28 attached garage, 26-by-40 detached garage, three loafing sheds, and a dock-and-pool structure. All of those permits have been approved. The only one that has not been approved yet is the dock-and-pool structure. We're waiting to see if the conditional use permit gets approved for that before. This was rather an offer under department review. County Highway came back and said that they only have one approach on file, and that's for the residence, not the second approach. Staff did make it a condition that the applicants get an approach permit. Staff did receive an email from the Highway Department that the applicants have applied for that. Shawn from the Highway Department just hasn't been out to inspect the approach yet. Once that's done, that permit would be approved. No other objections or concerns were received. The applicant is requesting to allow a dock diving and fast cat track on the subject property. The events would be limited to weekends with hours from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I just spoke with the applicant, it'd be once a month, twice a month at the most. Off-street parking is provided, and the applicants will provide porta-potties for the events. Staff has received multiple letters of support for the request, so with that, staff is recommending approval of Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0027 with conditions.
Does the Planning Commission have any questions for Cody?
I have one.
Yes, Michael.
Cody, how deep is this dog jump thing?
I believe is... That might be a better question for the applicant. I think it's five feet.
No, it's 48 inches.
Forty inches.
Okay, I was just curious, if it would be dangerous for kids or what? I didn't know. Okay, thank you.
So, one of the conditions, if you look in there, is that they lock that dock structure, so when events aren't being held, kids can't get up there and fall into the pool.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There's already been one event held out there, hasn't there?
Based off of the comments that were received from some of the emails, I believe so.
I was gonna say, just based on if you read the letters.
Yeah, but staff hasn't received a complaint about it. So, the applicants came in to us to start the conditional use permit process. We didn't send a letter or anything for violation. Didn't come out until afterwards, when we received those letters of support, that it appeared that it had been used.
Just for the record, because we do a lot of things, Madam Chair, that concern me when we set precedent and we look the other way. We also... There will be people that end up in violation, and we put penalties on them, dollars and cents penalties. Did that happen in this case?
The conditional use permit, I guess, I don't believe was penalized, but all the building permits that they received without... Or all the structures they put on the property without building permits were... They did pay a penalty fee for those.
Good. That's what I wanted for the record, just so that people don't think we look the other way on these things for special purposes. Thank you, Cody.
Yeah, I speak to that.
Sure you can, but you have to come up and introduce yourself. Thank you.
I'm Angela Dorn, one of the property owners. That event that we held was in unison with the Rapid City Kennel Club, and it was to our understanding, like, they asked us to host, and so we went with them, and we didn't realize that we would be in any violation as they asked for permission. We spoke with the fire department and did a lot of planning to co-host that event. So I do apologize, and if we need to do anything to rectify that, we're more than happy to.
I should... Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. I should also state that per our zoning ordinance, you can hold a temporary gathering, people are like an event like this, for no more than three calendar days in a year. So if they did one, and it was three days or less, it doesn't require a conditional use permit, but since they want to do one once, like, per month, it would reach that over three calendar days per year.
That's a good point, Cody. I just wanted to make sure mine didn't... My information didn't come... This is an excellent use here, and mine didn't come from that. Mine came from a participant and a person that's really involved in the talk, and I'm going, uh-uh, I can't look the other way on this. If I know that information, I gotta make it part of the record if it's not. And of course, some of the folks that wrote in made it part of the record already, but I wanted to make sure that the audiences that hear us and see us, we don't look the other way on these things. Thank you, Claudia.
Are there any other questions or comments for Cody? From the commission? From the audience? The Chair would address a motion on this item then?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move approval of C O C U 24-0027.
Second.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Oops. Discussion. It's been moved and seconded to approve this item. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0031.
Morning Commissioners. Jason Thedison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number nine is Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0031, to temporarily live in an existing single wide mobile home while building a single-family residence on the subject property. The applicant landowner is Sherry Toner. She's in the audience if you have any questions for her. Her agent is Melhoff Construction. Location of the property is 13866 Windmill Road. It is currently 50-acre zoned agriculture district. Access is off Windmill Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Zoning ordinance lists seven criteria the Planning Commission may consider in review of conditional use permit applications. They're on the screen. As you can see, they meet all the criteria as far as staff has analyzed. As the property sits today, it does have three structures on it, a 14-by-70 single wide mobile home, 26-by-34 detached garage, as well as a 16-by-32 shed, and an on-site wastewater treatment system. I circled on this map where the proposed structure is going to go. And this is a picture of the existing single wide mobile home that she plans to live on while she builds that new residence. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and there were no objections or concerns received. With that, staff has also received no public objections to this request, so with that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, C O C U 24-0031 with conditions.
Does the Planning Commission have any questions for Jason on this item?
Madam Chair. Jason, just one. On your property history, you have an on-site wastewater treatment system, and it just has a construction permit. That means it's never been inspected, or where are we at on that? I see it was... It's got a 15 number. Does that make it an old one, or?
It does. She'll be required to get an operating permit whenever she...
Okay. Is that something that's built in? I didn't look back at the conditions. I just caught it by accident there.
Yep. Yeah, so we'll catch that during the building permit process.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? The Chair would address a motion on this item.
I move to approve Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0031 with conditions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0031 with conditions. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item number 10.
Agenda item number 10 is Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0032, to allow multiple family residents on the subject property. The applicant is Keith Kuchenbecker. The landowner is Isaac Almanza. Location of the property is 23790 Highway 385. It is 54.99 acres, currently zoned agriculture district, access is off Highway 385, and there is special flood hazard area on the property. Again, the zoning ordinance lists seven criteria the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They're on the screen. As you can see, staff didn't find any issues with this request either. As far as the property history goes, there is... They did draw a building permit in 2021 for a single-family residence with an attached garage. However, they did not finish the single-family residence portion of that, and they only constructed the garage with the living quarters above, so that at that point was considered a single-family residence. They came back this year, I think it was January this year, and applied for another building permit to actually finish the construction with the single-family residence attached. At that point, they submitted these plans as part of that building permit application where they omitted the stove and the oven, and they would, as you can see on the right-hand side, they'd replace it with countertop and cabinets. I went out there and did a final building inspection. I talked to the house owner or homeowners, who at that point requested to not remove that oven, and I told them that we could do it as a multiple-family dwelling if they applied for a conditional use permit, and that's why we're here today. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County addressing stated that an address, a separate address, will need to be assigned to this if this is approved, and the on-site wastewater treatment system planner stated that the septic system is appropriately sized for this. For five bedrooms that are proposing, this would be the fourth bedroom on that system. With that, staff has received no public objections to this and recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0032 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the Planning Commission on this item?
Madam Chair.
Charlie?
Thank you. You just guessed, right?
I saw you leaning forward.
I have problems with these things, Jason. This little agenda we're on has three after-the-fact type things. I'm gonna say that at least this is suspect after the statement signed that they were gonna remove it. Somebody changes their mind down the road. We set precedence with these folks, so the next person that looks at this says, well, I'll just wait it out to the end, and I'll change it to multi. This particular property does look like it has sufficient buffering property. I mean, there's reasons to look at multi. But on the other hand, this commission historically has taken a very, very tough stance on multi. So, historically. And I just can't support this change in stuff in the middle of the stream, and that's what we're doing. We're fixing it after the fact. And I'm just... I'm just old enough that I just don't want to support that stuff anymore.
Right.
And it's a tough thing to ask you folks to do, because then the next person sitting out there that watches these commissions and listens and follows, they say, well, the door just opened for me too. And I just don't think that's a good idea to help you do your job, so...
Right. And one thing that came up in that conversation when I did that final building inspection is that they are an elderly couple, and they're looking for someone to help, you know, take care of them in a caregiver situation, so this would help them to have that additional space.
They're a very fit elderly couple, because they did a lot of their own staining on that very expensive building and stuff. Those folks are very agile.
Right. Yep, and they're out of town at this point.
But you're right. They're not young. There's no question about it, they're not young. But... And down the road, they may need... But down the road, we have abilities to have things to help without changing this now when we're building. I'm saying this, to me, has some suspect on it, that this was planned all the way. But that's the way I feel. I'm just... And I'm not accusing them. I'm just saying I'm unhappy with supporting these things after the fact and setting precedent that more people walk in and have that in their hand when they're dealing with you folks at the Planning Department, so that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments for Jason?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There... Jason, there's no history of, like, other families living there, is there?
No.
It's just this family lives here?
Correct.
When they're in town?
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? The Chair would address a motion on this item.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0032 with conditions. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Brittany. Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0030.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0030, is to allow an event center on the subject property for the sale of liquor. The applicant is the New Underwood Roping Club, and Bryce Chambliss is the agent. The property is located off of North Sea Avenue in New Underwood. It's approximately 3.05 acres. It is zoned agriculture district. When looking at Conditional Use Permits, the zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in the review of a Conditional Use Permit. Those seven criteria are on the screen. I will read some of the findings, as they do not meet all of the criteria. Item number one, allowing this Conditional Use Permit should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. And number two, the requested use may have a negative effect on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the neighborhood. The surrounding area has residential uses and lots in close proximity to the requested use. Item number three, allowing the CUP will allow a commercial use within an agriculture district. Item number four, currently, there is no improved access to the site. However, there is platted right-of-way along North Sea Avenue. There is no water or sewer on the site, and none are proposed in the application. The applicant indicated that porta-potties would be used for waste disposal. Item number five, there is no improved access to the site. The access proposed by the applicant is through private property that crosses right-of-way. Item number six, the event center for the sale of liquor is a commercial use more appropriate in a commercial zoning district. And item number seven is the event center for the sale of liquor is a drinking establishment that is more appropriate in a commercial zoning district. The property is currently vacant of any structures. There is no wastewater system on the property. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. Emergency services, both the fire and sheriff, had concerns about access to the event center through private property as it could impede the ability to access the site during an emergency. Analysis of the use, it would allow socials and fundraising events. The structure would consist of a 20-by-20 surrounded by an 80-by-80 fenced-in area. It would operate seasonally and not on a full-time basis. It would allow for the sale of liquor, beer, and wine. It would be located to the west of the New Underwood rodeo grounds. If you notice in red, that property is in the county, and everything else surrounding it is in the city limits of New Underwood. So if you look at the zoning here, you can see the items in green are in the county, and the items in the white are in the New Underwood city limits. Access to the lot is unimproved. However, when staff went out to do a site visit, if you look at where the vehicle is, right there, the right-of-way, the city of New Underwood does have a fence within that right-of-way. If you look at the right-of-way, you can kind of see it there, and that North Sea Avenue going to the north, there's a small structure right here, and then the fence comes through here, so it blocks off that right-of-way. The structure and use falls under a commercial use. The surrounding roads and utilities are not adequate for commercial use, and ordinance 14 requires a 30-foot wide paved surface. The surrounding area generally has an agriculture and or residential use. The subject property for the proposed event center is located on and will be fenced off from the New Underwood rodeo grounds. With that, staff is recommending denial of Conditional Use Permit, C U 24-0030, as a use is more appropriate in a commercial zoning district, as commercial zoning districts have eating and drinking establishments as a use by right.
Questions for Brittany? Charlie?
If you look at the drawings for the bar, I would think there's something on that drawing that really supports your denial request. It says "mobile bar," and I'm not sure the county commissioners or whether the sheriff wants this approval, a mobile bar. It says right on the drawing. That would concern me. I'm sure it would concern the sheriff that we're approving a mobile bar. Is there any other mobile bars in the county?
A mobile bar?
I don't think they can.
It's on the title block.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Brittany? If that were annexed into the city, then they would take over all of the direction of what they would allow with that.
Correct, if it was within New Underwood city limits.
So the rodeo grounds is in the city limits?
The rodeo grounds is within the city limits. This property is in the county.
We have someone from the public. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, Dane Booms, my board member at the New Underwood Roping Club, here to talk about what our idea is. I'll address the mobile bar. I'm not sure why that was labeled "mobile bar." That's just a draftsman. I'm not sure where he came up with that. This building would not be mobile.
Just happened to be unfortunate at this. I'm just saying it's almost comical.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that, so, you know, that can be wiped out. You know, that is not a mobile bar. So just to give you a little history, so the New Underwood Roping Club, I'm not sure how many of you have been involved in the roping community, but rodeo in New Underwood goes back 75 years plus. We had the very first New Underwood... South Dakota High School rodeo in South Dakota. The event was held in New Underwood up until the early 90s, where then it just grew too big. Obviously, rodeo in South Dakota is a huge sport. The New Underwood community supports that rodeo very much. We currently host a high school regional rodeo. We currently host the biggest 4H rodeo in the state, and then we also have the biggest playday rodeo where we do five or six easygoing, laid-back rodeo events throughout the summer. It costs $30 per kid to do five rodeos. You can't get that anywhere. Our primary focus and goal is the youth. It's not limited to the New Underwood citizens or proper. We get kids from 100 miles away that come to our playdays. With that, the club was alive and thriving back in the 60s when they started the High School Rodeo Association. A lot of the improvements, as anything that was built in the 60s was built very stout and very well, now needs upgraded. So over the last several years, we've put probably $150,000 to $200,000 into the rodeo grounds just to keep it up, keep it alive, keep it current. Throughout the summer, we do some adult entertaining, bronc matches, roping, some barrel races, things like that, that we use as fundraisers to go back into the arena, capital improvements. When we do those events, we do get the local bar to come up and host a bar at the rodeo grounds. The city approves, you know, the temporary use of that. Mr. Estes gave us an opportunity to acquire the liquor license, which has already been approved, conditioned on getting the Conditional Use Permit, and all of that allows us to do is keep those revenues. We're currently already holding all of these functions now. The neighboring... The neighborhood, I've talked to the neighborhood, most of them are there with their own labor, helping us and donating their time to make the improvements. Arlen Carmichael is the most immediate neighbor. He's kind of our watchdog. He helps us all the time. He oversees it because his house overlooks it. I talked to him. He couldn't come this morning. I asked him to come, but he is in support of it, because we're not changing our use. We're doing the exact same functions that we always have done. This allows us to keep those revenues, to go back into the club itself. I talked to another neighbor. Whatever reason, he misread the letter, and he thought it was a seven-day bar at the end of C Avenue. Not the case. One, we have no full-time staff. We were all volunteer. Bryce Chambliss is our president. He's our president. He's present here. We all volunteer. We all have kids in the function, and we hope to continue just to pass that down. So, again, no change in use from what we're currently doing. We're just trying to keep the revenues. Obviously, we do have the land in the county, which allows us to acquire the license from Mr. Estes, which was very nice of him to come to us for that. Bryce did have a phone call with the sheriff, and he had just questions, how are you gonna contain the people? How are we gonna keep them in that area? We're fencing it. We're putting signs up. We'll have it gated, so that coming in and out, there is no liquor going in or beer going in and out. We don't serve any of the liquor or beer at any of the youth functions. So the 4H rodeo, the regional rodeos, none of that, the bars are open. It would only be open during those adult functions that we do, again, just for the fundraising to put back into the club. I'm open for questions.
Anyone? I have one, if... So has the liquor license application gone to the Commissioners yet?
It hasn't. It's been approved. We have one year. Per that meeting, they gave us one year, or there's an ordinance or something that allowed us to get a one year to get the Conditional Use Permit.
So... So has the Department of Revenue looked at this? It seems odd that they would approve a liquor license to an entity that has all volunteers because they're pretty strict on the training, the checking IDs, that sort of thing?
Yeah, so we have to, we will have certified bartenders or licensed bartenders that have gone through the class, similar to what the Fairgrounds does. Hermosa Roping Club has a liquor license that they own. So there are other functioning groups that do this similar thing.
Okay. Charlie, did you have a question?
Could I ask, and whether you can tell me, are you buying or leasing the license? Are you buying or leasing the license?
We've bought the license.
Being transferred.
Why can't we go through the normal process and get the building out there and what difference would that make to your situation? In other words, to meet the criteria that's set up in the first place?
Well, a lot of the criteria that Brittany spoke to, like the utilities are insufficient. Well, we don't have utilities but one bathroom that has a septic out there. We have porta-potties out there all summer long. So we're, we never intend, we don't have the money to make this commercial. Now, one thing that I did hear that maybe Jason had said was that, being as we called it an event center, that it made the criteria classify as commercial. I called it an event center because Brittany and I were talking and she said, "Well, what are you going to be doing?" And I said, "Well, it's kind of a beer garden." She said, "Well, I'll just call it an event center." Okay. If I need to change it to a pole barn, you know, structure, if that declassifies the commercial use, we're open to that. Again, we do six to 10 events a year at the rodeo grounds and Bryce doesn't have time. I don't have time more than that. So that's not changing. We're going to continue to do that and that's it. And like I said, we'll do that regardless. We've been doing this for years. New Underwood supports the rodeo community immensely. It's a great place to put on rodeo. If you ever have a chance, come out.
One more question. What about the road and the, the access to this property as well as getting in and out of there? You are going to use it for commercial use once you are there, whether it's temporary or permanent?
So the roads that are there now suffice? Again, all the dollars we've put in, we've gravelled, we've improved that. The roads are being used currently today for all of the traffic. If you come by on a 4H weekend or a regional rodeo weekend, there's not an open spot on the grounds. We function very well. And you know that as well as we, we get an inch of rain down there, we don't have that big of a mess anymore because we've been able to get our drainage and things like that improved. So as far as the traffic, we're not adding any traffic. We're not changing anything we're currently doing today. Alls we're doing is a, it's a path for us to keep those revenues within our club.
But there is approaches off of other properties, what I'm seeing.
But we own that property, outside of that little sliver of right-of-way. So the private property that Brittany referenced that you have to come through, that's our property.
Okay, and then my last question would be is if you weren't the rodeo club, you were just Munkley Moe Enterprises coming forward and asking me to do this same thing, tell me why I would want to look at this and not see it as a commercial type of thing and that the other things needed to be done, that it's not an in-round run over other ordinances that call for things to be done?
So we are currently operating today. We don't get complaints with our events. Our events are very good functions. They were not problematic. You know, Jeff Jones is our sheriff in New Underwood. He's present at a lot of these events. It is not problematic. You have your one-offs, of course. We're not running until 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. Yes, there are, it's an adult event, but we get no complaints. We're currently functioning. We're not adding functions because we get this liquor license. And so in my opinion, if you look at history, when this is not a complaint-driven event center function area, whatever you want to call it. So I feel like it could be supported. Again, all of these proceeds are going back to the grounds, which our primary focus is our youth.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask Brittany a question? I was looking at the animal event CUP that was approved and that's in an ag district, correct?
That is, but that also isn't an animal event, isn't permitted use in any other district. If you look under commercial district, eating and drinking establishments are a use by right and commercial, so it's more appropriate in a district that allows it.
Okay, so, you know, I just, I just looked at this and it's like, this is pretty similar. I mean, it's tied to the roping club, which is, you know, animals. I mean, they just happen to, the primary focus of this place is not eating and drinking. It's related to the roping facility. They just want to have like, you know, some amenities for their events.
Right, but if you look at it as a standalone, like had Charlie had indicated, if you look at it as standalone, take away the roping club and look at it, what it is, it's basically a drinking establishment in an agriculture district.
Okay.
That's how we have, that's how we look at it as.
And we're concerned that that would set a bad precedent to have people put facilities like that in an ag district where they really don't belong.
So the Board of Commissioners, just at their last meeting, denied a request for a gentleman to have a boarding facility in a residential district because it was a commercial use in a residential district, so.
So we have no intention of on commercial use. I don't disagree with Brittany's position when you analyze ordinance. When you analyze ordinance, that's why we have a CUP process, right? Because it doesn't fit ordinance, which not every hat fits ordinance. That's why we're here today. And ultimately, it is up to you guys, but you understand full disclosure that this is simply, we're, we're operating today this. Your decision today means either we keep the revenue or we keep giving it to the bar owner downtown. That's all that it equates to. We appreciate, either way, we're just here because we have the opportunity and we feel like this is a legacy opportunity. We ask for fundraising every single year and we go down our list of people that we've got in the last five years and try to get the same contribution year after year after year. That's probably never going to change. This simply allows now to, down the road, that we have this revenue stream that maybe it's not quite as hard beating the street for these fundraising all the time.
I'm assuming that you guys have looked into annexing this into the city?
We have not.
I mean, is that, do you know, is that?
Well, we're back to the same thing that we had, we just hired the bar owner.
Is that an expensive process for a nonprofit business or for like a, you know, a group like this to go through to try to get it annexed into the city?
I believe it's just a petition to the council through New Underwood.
That would cost nothing, but that would exclude us from having a, sorry, a county liquor license. We would not be able to get the liquor license.
Oh, okay.
So there would be no benefit for us to annex, but no, there would not be a cost, you know, associated with that. We have a piece of county ground. We have an option to purchase the liquor license from Mr. Estes. That's why we're here today.
And you can't even do that for a temporary use? You can't utilize the county liquor license because you're not having a bar there all the time, correct?
Correct.
It's just there when you're having adult fundraising events.
I'm not sure if there's a process yet for the events or not. You know, and I would be open to if you guys put a 12-month, you know, approval on this and we can come back in a year from now and see if we've had any complaints or issues or anything that, you know, associated with it that would not want you to continue. I mean, we're open to that too. Give us next summer, you know, to show that we're responsible club and we're going to be responsible with this license, you know, and revisit it after that. I'm, we're open to that as well.
I mean, on average, how often do you have the adult events where you want a bar?
If we have two a mo, no, well, we, so we have Team Ropings, which is an evening event. So like, we have two in June, say, and then we have two barrel races in June as well, which is all evening. So like, May, June are probably our busiest. July, there's not a lot going on there because we're all traveling for youth rodeo in July. And then August, Labor Day in New Underwood is, is New Underwood's holiday. Labor Day is the big day. So we have a bronc match on, on Sunday night on Labor Day. That's a big event for us. So, you know, June, July, maybe it's three times, four times a month and then after that, it's onesie, twosie. We do a steak feed every, the New Underwood Roping or Rodeo Club, High School Rodeo Club puts on a steak feed, which we hold, host downtown. We would bring that up to our rodeo clubs. We're not hosting it downtown. We'd actually hold it at the arena. We do a steak feed and live and silent auction and that's a big, not roping club, but the High School Rodeo Club's fundraiser, we would host that up there, so.
But you're saying you don't serve alcohol when you have youth there?
Not at youth functions.
Oh, okay.
This is a fundraiser.
With adults, okay.
With adults, that's right.
So what you're describing is you have events where you want a bar six times a year?
That's correct.
Something like that?
Correct. We would not store alcohol in this building. We would store the alcohol in a secure spot off-site, you know, in between functions. This building would function with, you know, bringing bags of ice and bottles of water. Similar to, I talked to one of the commissioners about it, and similar to the two bars in front of the grandstands at the Fairgrounds. It's got a flip-up window. They haul all their ice in and it's all bottled water. And then porta-potties for, you know, the waste.
And again, like the event centers in the hills like that have weddings and stuff like that, they're all zoned for commercial?
They're all in commercial or highway service.
Or highway services, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I still have problems that New Underwood has a long and illustrious history with the High School Rodeo Association. No question about it. I knew about that long before you told me. Articles written on it statewide, it's well-respected fact. And I have problems tying alcohol to a high school rodeo situation, that that's where the continued support and certainly you guys, and I have no idea dollar amount or anything else, have supported that along the way. I have problems tying alcohol to that as well as we've got an event center that has nothing to do with the High School Rodeo Association type events, the availability of that liquor license and use for that, but we're going to drain off funds. And I hate to put you in this case, but there's other things that go the same way. You know, we could have marijuana people selling out of a place, you know, if it met the thing. If it met every criteria and if it was a marijuana thing instead of liquor, believe me, they'd jump through every hoop before they even got to the front door. And then they peel off money and donate it to things. I'm just not comfortable tying alcohol to a high school situation as support for it, in other words. It just doesn't seem like it belongs there unless you want to go through all the procedures that it takes to get it there and then once you do that, like you said, you probably don't have the money to make it full-time or anything else. And the road, we got to look the other way from the road conditions that we would normally put on that commercial person. We didn't hesitate putting them on the wedding centers that went up by Hill City, that went on 16. There's just too many things that are being driven around, you know? We're kind of skirting them, so. Right now, you haven't got me convinced is what I'm being, and I just want to be honest with you.
We are nonprofit. And all your wedding venues, those are for-profit. I mean, I understand. I build for a living. We develop property for a living. I understand all of that. Again, I'm here with the CUP process because this doesn't fit the box. I understand that. I appreciate you hearing me out.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm not sure if this is for Dane or Doyle or Brittany. Do, can we put a condition on a liquor license? I mean, can we say, "We approve this"?
They've already approved it. The commissioners have approved it.
Well, I know, but the use of it, that you could only use that 12 times a year? Is that something that we have the authority to do?
So you could continue it and send it back to staff to put a list of conditions on it? We can put conditions on the conditional use permit, not the liquor license.
So we could do that?
So if you would, if the board chooses, they could send it back to staff to bring back in front of the commission with the list of potential conditions or request a rezone. So those are two other options outside of just the denial.
Well, I see that a rezone position is, that completely screws up the liquor license, so that doesn't work. You know, that was one of my first thoughts, that we could, you know, again, have them annex into the city and then have the city go through the whole process, but the difference of the zoning on that creates that issue of the county license there.
But you can, can you rezone, but you can rezone it as commercial highway services and they could still transfer the liquor license within the county, correct?
They would rezone it to commercial within the county, yes. It would be a county zoning.
But then I, then I got to meet all the road and all of that and that definitely is not the intent today. And I'm telling you, we're not going to do that. Road improvements, the utilities, we're not. So I don't know what the advantage of doing the commercial. We're still going to be asking for conditional use permit because we're still asking for exceptions or variances to the ordinance.
Madam Chair, that's what I was going to point out too. You'd be subject to some variances in there, which could be as damning as everything we're talking about here.
But again, the variances would only apply to you guys as the owner. Any potential future use, depending on what they were proposing, might not be able to fit the variances that were granted for this particular facility.
So we can't impose any conditions or variances on a rezone, so you would have to look at the rezone, does it meet the criteria of rezoning it? So that would be up to the Planning Commission and Board to do that. Staff would recommend denial, obviously, because it doesn't have the infrastructure improvements. The other option would be to send it back to staff to bring back some conditions and the Board could reconsider it that way as well.
I would support that, to looking at what other options we've got that could make it happen, rather than just denial.
And I'm in support with that too. I asked that Brittany just communicate with me and work with me on what that looks like. You know, when I met with Brittany, there was really nothing brought up. I got comments on Friday at 10 o'clock in the morning for a Monday morning meeting. We had no time to discuss with staff. And I don't know what a reasonable time to get those comments back, but I would love to work with Brittany and staff for a way to a yes answer instead of show up here and now we're going back to talk. We could have done this two weeks ago.
I mean, because you do have, you know, you, I mean, I can see on your shirt, you have a construction company. I mean, you have volunteers that have the ability to move dirt around and make an entry, an approach bigger and.
And we're doing that.
Yeah, I mean, and all that kind of stuff.
We're doing all of that.
You can meet, you should be able to meet some of the criteria with your volunteer labor.
My guess is that it's not going to meet what the criteria says. It's not going to be paved, you know? Can I flip to that site plan, Brittany?
Sure.
Madam Chair, also, could I have, I had a question since the license is coming from Mr. Estes for him, whether, if we do this, whether this is going to create an encumbrance upon his operating?
Yeah, I have a speaker request from, so we'll get to him, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you can, oh, sorry.
Once we approve a conditional use permit, if we don't have any conditions on it limiting use, it could turn into a bar tomorrow, you know, as soon as it's built. They'd have no limits on the liquor license on the conditional use permit. So we have to, in my opinion, put some restrictions on it or the next generation of rodeo, rodeo club might say, "Hmm, we can make a lot of money and..."
Just a comment. Staff did talk about adding conditions, but because it doesn't meet the requirements of our ordinance, that's why we recommend a denial to bring it in front of this commission to be directed for the conditions. Because we do route this around, we do talk about it in our development review team meetings and it just didn't meet the requirements of our ordinance. So because it's an administrative review, there was not a way to bring it forward with conditions without direction from this body.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do they serve any alcohol at the stock show?
Every western sporting event in South Dakota, whether you agree with it or not, they serve alcohol. That's part of the western lifestyle, whether you like it or not. I partake in a very minimal manner. Some people partake in an excessive manner.
And I think we have to look at the use of this. Again, granted, you get an inch of rain out there, it's kind of a muddy mess, but most of the time, everybody's got four-wheel drive trucks. This is not Honda country with the little two-wheel drive vehicle out there. So I would make a motion if that's up to.
You just insulted my pickup.
I drive a mini truck too, so.
I think that Honda's got auto on four-wheel drive. I would move that we send this back to the Planning Department to look at conditions that would give us an option to look at other conditions, if that motion made sense.
For discussion, I'd second it.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask, good question. The rodeo grounds here that's in the city of New Underwood, there's nothing paved there, is there?
No, there's not, ma'am. It stops at our gate, which is a chip seal. New Underwood does a really good job of chip seal, but the chip seal stops just short of our gate.
Because it looks like it's all dirt, dirt, maybe some gravel?
It's all gravel.
It's all gravel, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. And I'll just note, the Mo's Bar and Grill, which is one of the establishments that's in New Underwood, Monty is on our board. We went to Monty when this opportunity came and said, "Monty, we don't want to step on your toes. You're the bar owner. You know, what do you think?" And he said, "This is a great idea." We, every year, we're struggling for fundraising at the club. So, one of the bar owners is one of our board members, which is going to help our direction as far as maintaining and running this, you know, temporary bar on events, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe we have to add an initial date for the continuance in there to meet Robert's rules. There has to be a date from the maker.
December 9th is the next Planning Commission meeting?
Can we add?
I would agree with them to that. Is that it?
Is that doable for you guys? Okay.
And I appreciate that. Let's get it talked about.
Number nine.
Nine, next meeting. Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second, but we also have a speaker request form for Mr. Estes. Do you want to?
Can I ask you one question, Doyle? Is the lengthening of the process going to inhibit your transfer in any way?
No, I believe the license has already been transferred to them.
All right.
The point I'd like to make, Commissioner Johnson and others, this liquor operation has been going on for years. And all we're doing is allowing these folks to cut out the middleman and get the benefit from liquor sales as a fundraiser for what they're doing. So, this property is not being changed use-wise for what they've been doing now. It's just allowing them to keep the money because they'll have the liquor license instead of the New Underwood liquor people doing it. So, you know, it's like to me Shakespeare, much to do about nothing. We're not changing what's been going on out there. We're just allowing them to keep the money because they'll have the liquor license. That's all I want to say.
Doyle, except for the event center?
Pardon?
Except for the event center.
It's a, it should not have used the word.
That's a major open door.
Yeah, this is not a buffalo chip campground. This is like 10 or 12 events a year, so.
But it's available for other things. It's something we've got to review, Doyle, because this is, this can be, it can be run there so many days a week.
I think Mr. Kuhn here has made the right idea. Limit it to 10 or 12 functions, days of functions a year. So, you make sure it's not going to violate it and have improper. And I, as a lawyer, I understand precedent. So, I understand what you're saying. But I think that's a perfect solution, is to limit how many days they can be using it. And then we're all right.
You heard my earlier comments about fixing things after the fact. So, that's why I think this is a good thing.
And I think Kevin's idea is a good one, so, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to send this item back to the Planning Department for conditions appropriate with a next hearing to be held on December 9th. Yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Get ahold of Brittany. Executive session, there is none today. County Board Report.
Commissioners, Brittany Molitor. The County Board Report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the November 12 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Items from the public, they just left, so we don't have any public. Items from the staff?
So, items from the staff, the Board of Commissioners, at their last meeting, enacted a temporary utility scale or alternative energy moratorium. So, at their next meeting, their first meeting in December, they're going to look at putting a committee together to discuss the alternative energy ordinance on the utility scale, not the individual alternative energies, but just on the utility scale to look at the impacts of those types of uses and what zoning districts they're appropriate in, so.
Is there a moratorium in place now?
Yes, there is.
And is there a timeframe?
One year.
One year, okay.
Where did this come from?
One of the board members had brought it forward.
Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
Can I ask who?
Commissioner Hancock brought it forward. We had a significant amount of public comment during that agenda item. There was probably upwards of 50 individuals from the community that voiced concerns that they just wanted it looked at from a citing issue and just setbacks, things like that, so.
I just got a kick out of how many times over the years I've heard the Planning Commission suggest moratoriums on certain things and they never flew. And we get a commissioner making a notation, and it could have been anybody. I'm not picking on that. But then it goes through. I find that a little bit comical, but that's all right. We've sure asked for it along the way or directions on things or time to get directions on things. And it never flew. So, it's a good thing, maybe, to sit down and talk these things out.
I think with the technology that's changed and they're, they have been operational now in areas to take a look at it, so.
Well, and we have one in operation already in our own. So, they can certainly have an input, too, from folks, I'm sure. Their neighbors, their operations. That'd be interesting to hear.
Madam Chair, can I make a comment? I should have made this comment when Commissioner Hancock was talking during that particular thing. I think we need to be careful to make sure that people are presenting accurate data. She presented data that like alternative energy uses are only like 3%. That's not even close to correct. It's more like 20%. And I should have corrected her in public, but I did not have the facts. You know, I wrote it down and looked it up after the fact. I mean, we need to make sure that people are presenting accurate data so we can make good decisions. That's just one of those things that, you know, I could have sat there on my phone doing it, but I was listening instead. I just noted it and checked it later. But people will present facts that support their stance, and they're really not facts.